Welcome to On the Ballot with Ballopedia, where we connect people to politics by providing neutral, nonpartisan, and reliable information on our government, how it works, and we're excited. I'm Jeff Kelly, and thanks for being with us. On this episode, we're looking at how authority over public education is shifting, both in individual states and across the country. In the second half of the show, we'll take a step back for a big picture look at local school boards. While nearly every community has one, a little more than 13,000 school districts in the country, their powers aren't uniform. Some school boards have broad control over curriculum, budgets, and personnel, while others are more constrained, limited by state laws, funding rules, or oversight from departments of education. And in recent years, that balance of power has been evolving as states respond to debates over what's taught in schools and who gets to decide. But first, let's head to Ohio, where lawmakers just passed a new law focused on parents' rights in education. It's part of a growing trend across the country, and it's raising questions about transparency, trust, and the role of schools and students' lives. I'm joined now by Axios Columbus's Alyssa Wedman-Nies, who's been closely following this story. Alyssa, thanks for coming on the show today.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
So could you briefly explain for us and our listeners the key provisions of Ohio's Parents' Bill of Rights bill? And kind of what prompted its introduction? What does it actually do?
Yeah, so I think it's important to point out that what's happening in Ohio isn't happening in a vacuum. There's been a push from conservatives to have more control over what's happening in public schools nationwide. So as Ballopedia pointed out, there's 24 states now that have this kind of law in place. So specifically in Ohio, it's sort of two-pronged. There's a component that requires districts to adopt policies on things parents essentially have a right to know about their child, from what they're being taught to their child's health and well-being. And the underlying issue there is a concern from some parents that students are being taught about LGBTQ people, or possibly receiving gender-affirming care during the school day, or possibly identifying as a different gender. The law specifically notes that parents must be notified of any requests from a child to identify by a different gender. So that is one aspect of it. And then the second part is requiring districts to allow students to leave school during the day to attend private religious instruction off-campus. And I'm not as familiar with how that looks across the country, but I know in Columbus, there's a group called Lifewise Academy that's been growing in popularity for this sort of thing. But some districts have been restricting it because they find it disruptive to the school day. So that's the impetus behind that component of a bill. And both of those were put together to create one law that's been referred to as the Parents' Bill of Rights.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks for the rundown. So how are schools interpreting and getting ready to implement some of these requirements?
Based on the testimony for the bill, schools were pretty opposed to this. But now that it's law, it's kind of a moot point. So now they're working on adopting the policies needed to be compliant. So with the religious absences component, those policies had to be in place earlier this month when the law took effect. But the rest of it, they have until July 1st, so we haven't seen as much on that yet. I talked with the head of the Ohio Education Association, which is the state's largest teachers' union. And he said functionally, he really doesn't expect there to be as much change in the classroom as some people might think, just because some aspects of the law, such as the right for parents to review curriculum, or giving them an option to opt out of that, or making sure that what the bill calls sexuality content is developmentally appropriate for children. He said those are things schools are already doing. But I think his concern, and something you kind of face with with any laws policing these so-called "culture war" issues, is you kind of run into issues with interpretation of language in the bill that can be kind of vague. So there's some concerns, I think, among schools and community members that there might be like some chilling effect or overcorrection as they're working to interpret this and implement it.
Gotcha. So what's the reaction been so far? So for instance, Ohio is one of the 23 states that has veto referendums. Has there been support of the spill? Does it seem like there's going to be a potential veto referendum movement? Is it too early for that? What's kind of been the reaction been so far in Ohio?
Yeah, I think it definitely depends on who you ask, because it was passed along party lines and among the conservative lawmakers, there's been a big push for not only this bill, but just education-related bills in general. But when you look at the testimony, very overwhelmingly, it was negative. And the public reaction to it has been mostly in opposition. I think it's still too early to say whether there will be some type of effort to overturn it. But I do know with Senate Bill 1, which is a different higher education reform, there have been some early efforts to collect signatures and try and put it to a vote to overturn it. So it's definitely possible. I just haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, fun fact, there have been 28 veto referendums in Ohio between 1910 and 2024.
Oh, well, that's good context to know. I guess we'll have to wait and see what happens.
I got that from some website called Ballopedia. I'm too familiar with it, though. So tell us a little more about some of the other concerns parents or students have raised or arguments in support of the bill that have come out.
Yeah, given the undertones of the law that I talked about earlier, specifically as it relates to LGBTQ students, I think the biggest concerns that I'm seeing among those who are opposed has to do with concerns about how transgender students are going to be treated as a result of the law. Counselors shared a lot of concerns in testimony about the complicated situation it puts them in. If a student comes to them, maybe their family is unsupportive. You know, maybe not even just LGBTQ issues, just any issues. If a student comes to them and is expecting confidentiality from a trusted adult, is that really the case anymore? Would that counselor maybe have to out a student who's seeking care or who's struggling with gender dysphoria? You know, it definitely seems to be coming from a place of concern about the well-being of the students. You know, we had a recent example in Columbus. It was related to another bill that took effect. As I said, we have a lot of them. It was what's commonly referred to as a bathroom bill. And our school district here in the city, Columbus City Schools, reverted back to using students' birth names in its record system. And that caused quite an uproar because apparently some transgender students were outed in class during roll call. We thought when we heard about it that the school system was maybe doing this in anticipation of the Parents' Bill of Rights taking effect. But they actually had said they did it because they thought they needed to do it to be compliant with that other law. And then it later came out that that wasn't the case. So again, a potential example of overcorrecting. So I think just in general, it's been a really tough time for schools to figure out with all these things coming at them, how do we make this work? How do we follow the law? How do we protect kids and make sure they're not being harmed? And you could have all the best intentions, and it still might not exactly work out in the way that it should.
Yeah, the relationship between school districts and their governing entities, whether that's the state or the State Board of Education, or the federal government, all sorts of interdynamics between the governmental bodies that govern our schools. So unlike any other bills, you know, once they get passed, there will certainly be future developments as laws get enacted and regulations get written. So are there any of the developments that you're watching either in Ohio or in other states for a legislation like this one?
Last I counted, there have been 71 education-related bills introduced in Ohio since this legislative session started in January. So there's a ton of stuff to watch. And I think the big challenge, frankly, for schools and reporters like myself is just keeping up. It's just such a tumultuous time right now, both at the state and federal level. You know, in Ohio, it's state budget season, and districts are facing potential funding cuts. We have the attempted dismantling of the Department of Education at the federal level. You know, we're still only five years out of a pandemic where there's been a ton of learning loss. And I think right now educators just have a lot coming at them, and it can kind of feel like whiplash. So just big picture, there's a lot to keep an eye on. Specifically concerning the Parents' Bill of Rights, I saw yesterday that there's already been a proposal to put some changes into the state budget regarding the number of times students can leave per week for those religious absences, because currently it's kind of open-ended. So I think that shows that just because something is law right now, doesn't mean it can't change. And we'll just have to be keeping an eye as closely as we can on everything that's developing.
Really, there are hundreds of thousands of bills introduced to state legislatures every year. It is a voluminous bit of activity. So it is, we certainly feel that and how difficult it can be to keep up with that. But I'm sure there will be more information to cover than in the months and years ahead, because education is one of those issues that's never going to go away. So thanks for coming on the show today, Alyssa. Great to have you.
Yeah, thank you. It's been great.
I'm joined now by our very own Annalise Reinwald for a look at school board authority nationwide. As Alyssa noted, Ohio is just one of dozens of states in the midst of rethinking the relationship between the state, school boards, and the citizens they serve. So let's dig into it. Annalise, thanks for coming on the show. Great to see you.
Yeah, very happy to be back.
We've talked about all sorts of different policy issues here, you and I, in the show. And now we're going to delve into a very interesting one around education and school boards, and something that we call the School Board Authority Project, which could mean a lot of things. We're not talking about the Port Authority in New York City. So briefly describe for us, what is this School Board Authority Project that we just wrapped up?
Yeah, so last year, we decided to study the authority that local school boards have across all 50 states and the constraints on that authority. So we combed through state constitutions, state laws, state regulations from executive branch education departments, and we studied the specific powers and duties that school boards have. So this looks like anything from budget building to curriculum, as you had said earlier, Jeff. We also looked at things like Parents' Bill of Rights, which can constrain school boards' authority. We also looked at collective bargaining agreements with school employees and how that constrains authority for school boards, because they also do a lot of employment of, or one of their main duties is employing the people who work for the school district. So it was really interesting. It's very sweeping. We have a couple of 50-state comparisons. So we talk about specifically, like, I think around like 36 states have control over whether charter schools are allowed in their districts, and the other policies that the states who cannot must adhere to. So we just have a lot of interesting information like that. It was a really fun project to research, and it's very in-depth.
Wonderful, wonderful addition to our more than 600,000 encyclopedic articles on ballopedia.org. So when people hear "Bill of Rights" or "Parents' Bill of Rights", they probably think about things like our National Bill of Rights, which, you know, we all know is a list of 10 different rights individuals, citizens have, something like that. But that's not exactly what the Parents' Bill of Rights is, right? It's not just like one uniform, you know, model legislation that's handed down by some central organization. So what does it actually mean, the Parents' Bill of Rights?
Yeah, it is one of those things where across the states, many things are called a Parents' Bill of Rights, but they might look very different in actuality. I believe as of this past week, 25 states have a Parents' Bill of Rights. And having looked through all the states that have them, since that's something that we track on our pages, they look really different from each other. So some of them are as simple as parents have the right to direct the upbringing and education of their children, and others get as specific as parents have the right to opt their children out of sex education, or they have the right to review curriculum content, right to review medical records. Parents' Bill of Rights can be very, very vague, or they can delve into specific policy arguments, specifically surrounding things like transgender student policies. A lot of Parents' Bill of Rights are addressing that through notification policies or allowing parents to view their students' medical records. I guess not so much allowing as requiring school districts to provide that information. But again, every Parents' Bill of Rights is different, and they address different policy topics and debates. And some of them don't really, they just give parents explicit statutory control over their children's education.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay. So let's talk a little about school boards then. As I mentioned at the top, there are more than 13,000 school districts in the country. Not all of them are in a secret equal, much like the state governments. Can you walk us through what kinds of authority local school boards will typically have or typically not have?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's really tough to speak sweepingly about school boards, like you said, Jeff. But typically, I think it's safe to say that local school boards do a whole lot of budget work for their school districts. They also are in charge of employing school district staff. According to our research, I can't remember the exact number, but it's either 45 to like 48 of all the states are in control of disciplinary policy in their district. So that's one that we see school boards being like really in control over. Another thing that school boards are charged with in most statutes is just general control over the administration of school districts. So it's different across states. Some states say school districts are to be administered by local school boards and leave it at that in the statute, whereas other state statutes say local school boards are given authority over the policy that administers their school districts. And then they go on to list, like 15 to 70, we've seen 70 specific duties that school boards have. So it varies a ton. Some state statutes even get into discretionary duties, where they list things that school boards can do, but they're not required to do. Sorry, that was a real zoom out. But other things that school districts typically do not have full control over is the timing of their elections. Most school boards across the country are given a date for their school board elections in state laws. Some states are allowed to choose between some dates listed in state statute. Some are allowed to choose a date within a range set by state statute. But that's typically not something that they have control over. There are other things that they have some control over. There's, again, a lot of variance, but while school districts in most states are given control over curriculum, they're sort of constrained by state standards, which is different than curriculum, because standards are more like, you need to teach about math. Whereas curriculum would be like, you need to use this method to teach about math. These are what your day-to-day lessons will look like. But some states or some school boards have to choose between curriculums put out by the state. They have to follow like curriculum frameworks. So it's really, it's very, very different wherever you go.
And you can explore all of this on Ballopedia in our article sets that we published in terms of, you know, how to do comparisons, how to look at the different laws governing the different state boards and whatnot. We've kind of laid it all out there, which would make it really fun for someone who wants to learn more about all that, I guess. Funny story with school boards and elections. In Texas, school districts can choose the time of their elections if they choose to. And we've been covering school district elections in Texas for quite a long time. Typically, one school district that does do that. All the other ones are happy to fall under the jurisdiction of the county, but there's one that likes to hold its own elections, and they actually have the authority to be allowed to do that if they choose to. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really interesting.
So Alyssa told us a little earlier about Ohio's Parents' Bill of Rights. But what else has been changing lately on the national scale? So what have we found from our studies so far? Are boards gaining power, losing power, states-level takeovers? You know, what seems to be changing sort of nationally if we step back?
I mean, it depends on where you're looking, and it depends on what policies you're looking at. We see school boards gaining autonomy in some ways and losing autonomy in others, just depending on the specific policy area. And Kentucky, they just passed a bill allowing school boards to request that the State Board of Education exempt them from any state-level laws or regulations. So that pretty clearly affords school boards a lot more authority over education policy in their districts. Other states are removing state-level teacher certification requirements and allowing school boards to create their own policies due to staffing shortages and things like that that a lot of schools around the country are facing. However, as with the case of Parents' Bills of Rights, some states are constraining school boards' authority over certain policies. I mean, we're seeing right now a lot of bans on DEI or diversity, equity, and inclusion curriculums. So that constrains school boards in terms of curriculum creation and what they can teach about, or the ways that they can teach about things, which is in some states, a little bit more accurate way of saying that. California enacted a state law last year that prohibits school boards from requiring school districts, employees from notifying parents experiencing changes in gender identity, which constricts, it specifically constrains school boards authority over policies in that realm of policy. We're also seeing states requiring school districts to adopt policies restricting cellphone use in classrooms. So it really just depends on what sort of policy you're talking about. And we're seeing school boards gaining authority in some ways and losing it in other ways. Another interesting thing we're seeing is more federal directives on school district policy. You don't really see a lot of federal directives on curriculum very much, but the Trump administration has issued a couple, well, I guess Donald Trump has issued a couple of executive orders relating to DEI and things like that. We did see some like Title IX regulations from Biden administration as well. So it's not just Trump who's doing it, but.
So one of the interesting things with what you're saying in your answer is that at times, local school districts, they'll try something out, say a cellphone policy. And if that sort of catches popularity in a state, then a state may come in and say, okay, we've seen some examples coming from different local districts that have the authority to try things out. And now we can go ahead and let's actually make, we want to make it statewide. Or maybe the opposite, right? Maybe some local districts try something out, and then the state says, okay, that's not working out so well.
Right, right.
So it's kind of your classic example of sort of federalism at a smaller level, I suppose you might say, where you've got a larger entity of government and a smaller sub-district, and they're sort of having a tug-and-pull back and forth of trying things and seeing what works, and it's kind of the.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's cliche, it was the old laboratories of democracy concept in the US, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It is a really interesting concept. And like you said, Jeff, there's a lot of ambiguity in some state statutes that really gives school boards a lot of authority over things like these. So while we're seeing a lot of statewide cellphone bans, I think that those have been around on the local levels and other districts for longer than this national trend that we've been seeing. But it is just interesting to see them become like a state-level mandate. I think the whole federalism discussion about school boards is fascinating. I mean, we saw a story that caught our attention on the policy team last week, or maybe two weeks ago, that was really interesting, because a school board in Washington state was deemed to be noncompliant with the State Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction required policies regarding transgender student policies. And the school board reached out to the federal government, whose policies were more in line with the local district, and asked them to intervene and clarify, because the school district was having policies that conflicted with state-level directives, but complied with federal-level directives. And either way, the school stood to lose funding from either the state or from the federal government based on their policies. So that is a really interesting example of federalism with school boards, because especially states that are more at odds with the Trump administration, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of this. So fascinating stuff.
All the more reason why people now start to wonder, well, does my school board have the authority to do this? We've got that answer for you. You can find that on Ballopedia.
Yeah, we do.
So some boards can raise their own revenue, others can't. The school board revenue, I think, often surprises people with just how much, you know, essentially government-raised funding, school boards have a responsibility for. They have significantly large budgets. There are a lot of students in this country. So where they get their funding depends on the state, depends on the authority. So what did we find, I guess, from our research with respect to school board authority to raise their own revenue?
It's not something that we focused on in our research. School boards that raise their own revenue typically have a little bit more flexibility in policies, just because funding or the withholding of funding is typically an enforcement mechanism for state and federal policy directives. So when the school district is in disagreement with the state over a specific policy, and they are able to raise their own revenue, then they're less likely to feel pressured to conform to the state-level policy directive.
Yeah, we see that a lot with respect to local bond initiatives and referendum, for instance, with respect to school districts and where they get their funding from.
Absolutely.
Now, are there any key differences between school boards that feature elected versus appointed members?
So we don't really see states that have state, like a statewide statute, like appointing every school board, because that would be really hard to appoint every school in the state, and most of them are elected. Although Hawaii does have only one school board, and it is appointed by the governor. But there are appointed school boards out there. Some states have laws that allow the Department of Education or another entity to take over a school board if the school district is struggling academically or financially, and they can appoint members. That typically serves shorter terms than elected members. I think we see this in Boston, in Cleveland, and in Philadelphia. It just depends on the state statute about whether or not the state can step in and assist with schools that are having a hard time in appointing people that they think can get the district back on track, that sort of thing.
So the times when this kind of research would matter to someone, I would guess would be, you know, when you're getting ready to vote, and you're trying to research your candidates. And also, you know, if you're a citizen in a district, and you're trying to follow along with what a school board's up to, and, you know, what's going on in school district meetings and everything else. So what advice would you have on how people can learn more about their particular school board or any of the state's policies that might govern it?
I mean, shameless plug, our School Board Authority pages are extremely interesting. So we list out all of the powers and duties of the school board. And we list out ways that they're either constrained or not by specific topics. So we talk about school board authority over charter schools or open enrollment and public school choice, specifically over things like book removals. We talk about whether school districts have the authority in each state to remove books from school libraries, or if they have parameters around which books they're allowed to add in the first place, things like that, which really helps people engage with the topics. If you are going to a school board meeting and you are against some curriculum directives that have been implemented by your school board, it might be that it's a state-level requirement, and going to a school board meeting to protest it may not be the perfect venue for you to do that, because they really have no authority over that thing, or that sort of topic. But our School Board Authority pages have a lot of information about that.
You gotta know who to lobby, right? Simplest way to put it.
Exactly, exactly.
Kids gotta know who to lobby, their parents, and parents have to know what their district can and can't do.
Oh, exactly. And, you know, there are times too when people run for a school board and might not know what it entails. So our resource is also really helpful for school board members who are maybe starting out and aren't receiving a lot of training. I highly recommend subscribing to Ballopedia's Hall Pass Education Policy Newsletter. My colleague Sam Wanacott puts together a phenomenal newsletter weekly that has conversations about battlegrounds and policy topics that school boards face. And not just school boards, he talks about like state and national stories, but.
Great newsletter, yeah.
I highly recommend that.
Well, I'm certain this story won't be going away. We'll be continuing to cover developments on ballopedia.org and the new. We'll, we'll be continuing to cover developments on ballopedia.org and the newsletter that you just mentioned and, and all of these new articles we publish. So Annalise, great to have you come on the show and explain all this for us today.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
And for our listeners, you can learn more about our school board coverage at the link in our show notes. We'll be back sometime soon with another episode. Make sure you subscribe to On the Ballot wherever you listen to podcasts. I'm Jeff Pallett and thanks for listening.